I have one. Thank you.
I call the regular Town of Mountain View, August 18th, 2025, meeting to order at 9:29 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Mitchum?
Here.
Algean?
Yeah.
Bailey?
Here.
Debner?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Lasher?
Here.
Unger?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which has advanced on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please read the items of the consent agenda into the record?
Agenda approval, minutes of July 21st, 2025, regular meeting, minutes of August 4th, 2025, special meeting, resolution number 2025-08-18A, coordinated election IGA with Jefferson County, resolution number 2025-0818B, appointing Charity Campfield as town treasurer.
May I please hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And a second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. The consent agenda is adopted. We are now going to swear in our new treasurer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please raise your right hand. I, Charity Campfield, solemnly affirm
that I will support and enforce the constitutions of the United States of America and will support and enforce the constitution of the United States of America
and the state of Colorado
and the state of Colorado
and the charter and ordinances of the town of Mountain. And shall faithfully perform to the best of my abilities
shall faithfully perform to the best of my double say
the duties of the town treasurer
upon which position I am about to enter.
Oh, you get this.
So first up on our regular agenda is our public comment period. This runs very similarly as the prior one. You can, however, because it's a regular meeting, speak on any item that you wish to speak on. It doesn't have to be limited to items on the agenda. We ask you to sign up on this sheet, provide your name and your contact information. When you come, thank you very much. Up to the mic, you're speaking to the council and you're speaking for the record. So try to speak right into the mic. You will not get responses during this meeting. I will ask you if you wish to have follow up and if you do, staff will follow up with you afterwards. We'll ask you to limit your time to three minutes. We'll take comments in the room first and then we'll move to online comments. I do believe we have some people online as well who'd like to comment. So first up, we have Ann Clark.
So my name is Ann Clark. I live at 4100 Ames Street. I don't usually like to do compliments at this type of thing, but I really appreciated the Saturday workshop and the things that Charity said during the Saturday workshop. I really appreciate what Mr. Nugent presented tonight. I think that clarified a whole lot of things for a whole lot of citizens of this town who have been wondering where is everybody's mind dead in relationship to real estate? That being said, very factual tonight, broad stroke what I'm going to say here. I really would like the council to pay attention to what the citizens slash homeowners of this community have to say. We represent a cross section of this community and we need to be listened to. And people that we need to be listened to. I'll leave it at that. Personally, I think the discussion.
Can you speak right into the mic, please?
Personally, I think the discussion related to the mayor's salary is spinning and is inappropriate. I think this needs to be tabled at this time. Regarding real estate, the purchase at 4385 Benton Street continues to amaze me. I think it was wrong. Those of us that are homeowners know how long that damaged piece of property has sat there. I think the city bought something that was inappropriate for the city to buy. We bought it. Let's put the police station down there. Let's give the police station everything they need. There's a consistency in the 40 years I've lived here of our police and our police needs. Put the police station down there. Make your expansion related to these other administrative needs within the other properties. Sorry. I think the publication, I think what we publish in the Gazette is detrimental. I think the articles in the Gazette stir the pot and are inflammatory. I do understand, however, that there are a lot of citizens that get their information from that source. And finally, I'd like everyone here to listen to the professionals. I think there's a lot of.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Jeff Kitty? Ann, would you like a follow up response? Thank you.
Once again, I'm Jeff Kitty. I just, I just verified with the town attorney that the pay that you are now getting was raised illegally mid-year.
By the prior administration.
I'm getting to that, by the prior administration. Okay? That was never addressed. Okay? The thing is, is that I understand that you need a living wage. And if that's the case, maybe this isn't the best spot for you. The other thing I'm really tired of is I'm tired of getting ridiculed for the people that show up every council meeting as being the mob. We've got people that are with us that won't show up for the same reason. So you can do what you want, but we shouldn't be in real estate. Now, if you want to put the annex down at 40, down at the Benton property, that would be a perfect use for that. And sell the other one for a home lot. That's, you know, I'm just saying. And we did a lot of work as a council with a very strong administrative staff and not near what you have. And a lot of them were part-time, which saved the town a lot of money. Just that simple. It can be done very easily if you have the right staff and you let them run and you give them the support that they need. And I am also going to say in front of everybody, that young lady right there is the best hire you've made. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Do you need a follow up? Doesn't sound like there were questions, right?
No, there were no questions.
Okay. Is Carl Mitchum in the room still? I don't see him.
No.
Seneca Pelton?
My name is Seneca Pelton, 4352 Eaton Street. I'm a resident. What I'm seeing.
Can you speak right into the mic?
What I am seeing tonight is that people are voting on Emily and that's what they are looking at instead of the mayor's position for the next four years and who's going to sit in that position. And I think people are very wrapped up in her. Not specifically about who the new mayor is going to be, but I feel the new mayor needs to have a living wage. We're moving forward and we have some very specific problems in our community because of how small it is. There's not a lot of areas for us to have ways to finance our town. And everything gets more expensive. And I think the purchase of these properties and where they're located at was a very wise decision. They're assets for our community and they will grow in wealth every day. You know, and if they plan to sell them later on, that's fine. If they convert them to whatever, that's fine. But I do not feel that those were bad decisions in any way, shape or form. And I think the people here need to start looking at the position of the mayor and who that individual is that's going to sit in that spot for the next four years and take our town forward. And I think the people are mainly looking at Emily and I don't understand why that is and I really don't care. But they're not looking at the position of the mayor and what that person needs to do for us. And over the years that I've been here, this town has done nothing but grow. And it used to be incredibly unprofessional. The police force we had here were a bunch of thugs and pieces of crap. And that's it, flat down. And now we have very respectable individuals on our council, our mayor, the lawyer, the people that sit over here, especially our police force. They're an amazing group of people. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Seneca. Char? Yes. Okay. Do you need, it doesn't sound like there was a question that requires a follow up. Charlene?
My name is Charlene Pelton and I live at 4352 Eaton Street. And I just want to say I really, I hate how the town is divided. I can just feel it. I can feel it in here. I can feel it on the street. And I just wish we can come back and be a community again. You guys are doing a wonderful job and I love our police force and I want to support them and I don't want the police officers to leave. I want to keep it how it is. And Dave does a great job and you've done an amazing job within just a few days. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you very much. Okay. Kenda Hallahan?
Kenda Hallahan, 4363 Eaton. I've lived in this town for 50 years. Recently bought a car after 22 years. Gave the town $1,200 in taxes, much more than that we gave the state. And I would like to see that used for citizens, especially fixing the curbs. Our neighbor fell and was injured and still it does not get done. And I would like you, the state's making cuts, this city of Denver is making cuts. We are not getting a tabor this year. I think no salary increase. Thank you.
Would you like a follow up regarding the curbs from staff? Brian Carney?
I'm Brian Carney and I live at 4320 Ames Street. Been a homeowner for 17 years, so back when Betty was mayor as well. And yeah, the Benton property really threw me for a loop. I think it's a property that we overpaid for. I know you just said yourself today that, you know, these buyers keep coming to us. Well, if I was going to sell my property and I was going to pick a buyer, I would go look for whoever was going to give me the most money. So the fact that these things are being bought without going out to the market, you know, that one at for $670,000. You said you didn't want it to be developed, but the sale agreement you sent to me shows you bought it from an LLC. So it was already owned. It's not like somebody lived there. You know, it was already owned by something to be developed. And that's my biggest concern is I think some of the development that's going on here. You know, the house on Ames Street, when it came to the town hall, I don't understand when you didn't buy that first house on Ames Street. You just didn't build the town hall there, add the police force to the current one and be done with it, you know? These real estate deals don't sit well with me when you talk about being able to rezone something. Well, I back up to the garage mechanic's garage. So if Sam's house could be sold to the town at an inflated price and somebody could build a coffee house there, like, you know, that's not what we want for our house. I also have to agree, I do not like the Gazette has become just kind of a personal editorial. You know, I did not agree with you reaching out to voters before the town manager vote. I thought that was inappropriate. I think you weighing in on the recall election was inappropriate. And, you know, I just don't want to see this town be owned by two, one family, two developers, you know? The BTM LLC or I don't know what your ex-in-law's initials are, their LLC, but, you know, everyone, one family is buying up everything in town and that's not what I want. And one of them used to be on the town council. So you guys getting into real estate just seems very, very shady to me, basically. So that's my comment.
Would you like a follow up? It sounds like you had, you had some questions that I think we could clarify if you had a, if you accepted a follow up from staff.
Yeah, email it out to everybody.
I'll work with the clerk on that issue. John? We have John from, on Benton. I can't read the last name, maybe starts with an L? Okay. Nancy Bucci?
Nancy Bucci, 4146 Benton. I don't know how this is going to come off and I'm sorry if it's going to be a little bit aggressive. This is my first meeting I've ever been to here and I'm appalled how elected council members are speaking about the residents. And especially to point someone out, council member, I don't know how to say your last name, Locher. How dare you come in here and say this mob? I've never even heard of it before. We have facts in front of us or we are presenting what we think is facts and it's your job to prove us wrong, to give us facts. And leadership comes from the top. So you expect people to respect you when you're not going to respect the people that voted you in or did not vote you in, because I know some of you were just put in council and not elected. It's rude and it needs to stop. This is not how democracy works and this is not how we should be treated. I absolutely 100% agree that the Gazette at, I don't know how much we pay, but let's say it's $500 a page. We used to have two, now we have one, has been used, Mayor, for your personal, I don't know, your personal editorials. You talked about the recall on it and what your views were. You talked about now how your salary should be increased. How about showing both points of view? How about utilizing this money and maybe highlight somebody in the community? We have 500 of them. I'm sure we're doing cool stuff. We had neighbors that went away for a year. That's a cool story. Maybe put that in there instead of you using it as your personal page. Sorry, I have a nerve problem. Also, council members writing notes, putting down residents because of the recall. And you say people aren't come here because they're scared. They're scared to come. Listen, I put the recall sign right on my front yard to vote yes. You don't think I was nervous? Don't you think? But you know what? This is democracy and we're allowed to have an opinion. As you are also, but you are elected officials and you are held to a higher standard. And I don't want to hear from any of you, anybody calling anybody a mob or anything. We are allowed to have our opinions. And you as elected council members or not elected are there to support us. The residents are first, not you guys. Thank you.
So would you?
Sorry. I know I had a couple of seconds. I do oppose your salary increase 100%.
Would you like a follow up regarding any of that?
Yes, yes, please. And I also would like it, if you can send an email to all of us concerning this meeting, you can send an email to all of us concerning the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Brack?
Hi, I get really nervous up here. The first meeting I ever came to was, I came with a lot of emotion and every other meeting since then, I've come with curiosity. I'm just going to do bullet points because I've, I am not opposed to an increase in pay. I'm going to leave that up to council because I think you all fully represent the town very well. The real estate, I think, is it going to be, if we're all keeping you accountable, is going to be a really good pivot because the marijuana industry, we have declined. And so we do have a lot of potential to grow our commercial area, which really needs some revamping. Short-term rentals, I know that's not on the thing tonight, but I think the tax should be increased to 10 to 12 to 15% for short-term rentals. It is a passive second income for a lot of people and I think we could benefit from that income. And then you all had mentioned some art project maybe in the future. I would love to be considered for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, she just is a resident.
She must have said resident. On to Pew. And her name is Brack.
Purple House. And it sounds like I, it sounds like staff should follow up with you on a number of those issues. Okay. Melinda?
Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. This may not go over well with a lot of people, but I am a very full supporter of having livable wages. I'm going to just start there. Couple of things that you did say and I kind of want to talk about a little bit more or at least maybe get some insight from you is you've indicated that you work like 70 to 80 hours a week doing the job. I've led extremely large organizations and Fortune 500 companies. And when I have employees that say I'm working 70 to 80 hours a week, it's usually one of three things. Either one, they don't know how to manage their time. Two, they don't understand the job. Or three, they definitely need some help. We keep talking about professionalism. I'm a big fan of the town administrator position. I think we should hire folks that are professionals and not put that responsibility on somebody that isn't. Simple as that. Another thing I have a question on is my understanding is the mayor, and since you are running for reelection, going around and soliciting feedback on the pay increase, I think that's borderline unethical. Maybe I'm wrong, but maybe we should look at that. I also want to point out the two council members that have been bashing everyone that comes and shows up. You haven't spoke up at all. And then tonight you do. And I also want to point out, you three sent the letters. We didn't. You lied. It was full of disinformation and falsehoods. And then you're asking for people to vote for you. I absolutely do not think you deserve to sit up in these seats whatsoever.
Do you want to follow up to that? Catherine Colwell?
Hi, Catherine Colwell, 4354 Chase Street. First of all, regardless of what I say.
Can you speak directly into the mic?
Regardless of what I say or how it comes out, I just love my little community. I think a lot of us are here because we have this romantic notion of community and, and boy, I, you won't get a bigger romantic than me. One Leal came out and said, uh, keep the charm, embrace the future. I love that. So 38,000, I want you guys to keep that number in your mind. I would like to fully, because I've been here almost 20 years, fully honor the efforts of past mayors and past council and staff who have given so much we don't even know to keep our little town doing the best they can. Thirty eight, I, I go to the McDonald's down at over on Wadsworth and there's always a sign there, $19 an hour. So at that rate for 40 hours, that's how much a McDonald's employee would get, 38,000. And we're all hanging on by the ends of our bloody fingertips trying to make it with 50 or 60 or 70,000 dollars a year. So I think it would have been really cool if we could have had a sheet that enumerated the, the charter expectations of the mayor and a log of what our current mayor is putting in every day and, and how those demands have changed as the town has changed. The demands and challenges and duties of all the staff. Yeah, I mean, I'm going to end with that $38,000 thing. You know, come on. Thank you.
Do you want to follow up to that? Thank you. Ryan Ryle?
Don't start my time yet. My name's Ryan Ryle, 4195 Chase Street.
You can take the mic out if you want.
There, how's that? Oh, we're started. So I had notes prepared, but I listened to the first part of the meeting from home because children and wife runs a nonprofit and things going on. So I was impressed by the accountant's presentation and those of us who have seen balance sheets before, I'm impressed by the health of the finances of this town. I'm impressed by the reserves that we have. I'm impressed by how money is actually spent and the job you guys are doing on your budget. And I see the budget and you guys may not hear or see me a lot, but I read all the minutes. I take in all the agendas. I'm a little too busy to be here all the time. But I do kind of represent the other side of some of the tables on a lot of these different topics. And, you know, a couple of council members have come to my house and we have spoke and you kind of get where I sit. I'm a little vocal with it. But as far as real estate, I'm involved in real estate myself. I look at the real estate acquisitions as assets and investments for the town and they are going to do nothing but make this town money. Yes, it is a little slow because it's bureaucratic, but you know, it gives us a chance. And then the commercial property on Benton, or the, the property on Benton that should be commercially rezoned or mixed-use rezoned. Anybody who's involved in commercial real estate knows that the value that can bring. And we need to diversify revenue aside from recreational marijuana. Why not rezone commercial and bring in more businesses for tax revenue, for development revenue, for options and abilities for this town to make more money? I don't know why there's a whole crew of people. The division here is disgusting, just so everybody knows. And I'm sorry that you guys have to put up with this, but it is absolutely ridiculous. And it's a bunch of children, because I have three of them, that just can't be professional, quiet and let other people speak and, and have opinions. But besides that, I also support, I think it's appalling that anybody would work for $37,000 for the hours that are put in and the type of professionalism and job that this requires. I fully support benefits as well. Like who doesn't have health benefits at a full-time job anymore? That is like third world country and Europeans would just cackle at us for such things. But keep laughing. It's all right. You can come find me, 4195 Chase Street anytime. But you know, I fully, I fully support a pay increase. It's well within the budget means. It's well within what we've allocated for the town. It's far less than a town administrator. And then if we do decide to hire a town administrator at a later time, you know, we can adjust at that point. But I think fair wage for the fair work with benefits makes all the sense for the works being put in. You get what you pay for. You know, if you have a $37,000 a year mayor versus $60,000 or $70,000 mayor, there's a difference in that type of professionalism capability, abilities that we need to respect and we need to have.
Set us up. I'm going to say this one more time to the member in the audience who's been snickering. That's the second time that I've asked you to be quiet. If I have to ask you again, you're going to be removed from the meeting. Do we have, I know we have people who are, I'm sorry?
Can I respond to some?
No, we, during our public comment periods, we don't respond. Do you want a follow up? Okay. Thank you for your public comment. And thank you to everybody in the room for. Okay. Thank you for your public comment. And thank you to everybody in the room for coming to the meeting and, and participating during the public comment period. I really do appreciate everybody sharing their views. I believe we have some people who are participating remotely who would like to comment.
No one has requested to comment.
If there is anybody who is participating remotely with the meeting and they would like to make a public comment, they can put into the chat their name and their, their address and the clerk will see that in the chat and unmute you.
Chat, save it.
Oh.
So that, that's why I came down.
Oh.
Julia online, please unmute.
Yes, Julia.
Yes, yes. Uh, hello, everyone.
Just going to unmute you in just a minute, Julia.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Julia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Joseph and Julia Enderly, 4162 Chase Street. My husband Joe has been a resident and an owner, uh, here in town for over 10 years. I've been a resident for five years. And this is my first time, oh, both of our.
Sorry, we're still not hearing you. So we're trying to figure out. Okay, go ahead, Julia. You have the floor.
Okay. Julia Enderly.
Is one of our, our new meeting formats, the webinar. So I appreciate your patience. It's designed to protect us from being Zoom bombed.
Can everybody hear me? Hello? Hello?
What if she called one of our phones and said something out loud on the phone?
Yeah, as long as the recording will get it.
You put it right up to the mic.
Uh, can you hear me now? Hello?
Perfectly.
Hello? Hello?
So I just texted her, what if I call you so you can speak? We're having trouble with the webinar. She said, perfect. Okay. Go ahead, Julia. You have the mic. You have the floor.
Thanks. Uh, very happy to be here. This is my first meeting. Uh, and I've been a resident at 4162 Chase Street for five years. And my husband Joe Emery has been here for over 10 years. First and foremost, I would like to commend the government, uh, the town of Mountain View for exceptional leadership and from what I can visibly see over the last five years, fantastic improvement. Number two, I would like to respect the fiduciary responsibility to the town, first and foremost. Uh, and I would like to address two topics. First, I would like to absolutely agree with the comments previously raised by, uh, the gentleman who spoke previously, I believe, Ryan, Ryan Ryle, regarding the investments of property in the long term future of the town. I personally view it, and I think anyone who's a real estate professional views that person, that purchasing property versus, uh, renting or anything else, uh, is a long term financial investment in our future. Again, thank you for all of your leadership. And just according to some stats regarding mayor pay and also council pay. According to 2024 Census Bureau data, according to single earner, $77,000 per year is a living wage. And I would like to also commend Catherine for coming up and discussing somebody who were to work at McDonald's. According to my calculations, at current Denver County minimum wage, $18.81, I mean, that still puts the mayor pay at minimum wage above. Or I'm sorry, below what someone who works 40 hours per week, 52 hours per week at $18.81 per hour. So that, that's just embarrassing and that's without benefits. So I, I fully and wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support not only a raise in not only Mayor Mitchum's salary, but any mayor who, who should serve after her. Because why, why would anybody run again? Honestly, if they're not going to be paid a living wage, this is more than a full time job. This is a commitment. Nights, weekends, days, all of the events. It's just embarrassing. If you want a volunteer mayor, you're going to get absolute garbage. You want volunteer council, you're going to get garbage. So to, to town council, I would like to also just bring this topic to your, it's really embarrassing what you get paid as well.
Thank you. You're out of time. We appreciate you calling in for a public comment.
Thanks.
Okay. I believe there might be one other person, but I can't tell if the other person puts in their name and their chat, their contact information in the chat. We'll call them if we can't. Do we see anybody else? Okay. Thank you to everybody for coming and participating in the public comment period. I know it's, it's difficult to join, um, a meeting like this and we appreciate your time. We are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is an ordinance considering establishing the mayor's compensation for the term commencing at the conclusion of the November 4th election. May I please hear a motion to bring it to the floor?
I move to approve ordinance number 2025 dash zero eight dash 18A and ordinance establishing the mayor's compensation for the term commencing at the conclusion of November 2025, according to, and of course, now I just realized I could have just said so moved, but I'm. Read the whole thing again.
And a second?
A second.
So we know from the workshop that this is a divided issue and that we need to put a number in for, um, what the compensation might be if we're going to move this forward. And then we also want to add in that when the town administrator slash town manager position is actively filled, that's an amendment and we haven't really discussed what the amount would go down to. So we've talked a lot during the workshop about what the, um, responsibilities are under the current charter. We've talked a lot about the differences between a strong or a mayor council form of government and a manager council form of government. And, um, I know to some extent, we need to get some of that conversation on the record, right? Like, can we just kind of go into deliberating the issue?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I would like to open the floor up for discussion from council. Is there anybody who would like to start the discussion?
Specifically, what is the, uh, reiterate that, please, Mayor?
We're looking for, in the ordinance, there's a blank. If we're going to move the ordinance forward, there are two blanks. One is what amount of compensation should the incoming mayor be paid? And with or without benefits? And then one is what should the, that amount be if there is a town administrator or a town manager hired by council? What should it go down to? So we, we need those two amounts in order to make, to move this forward. Councilmember Algean.
I think, I think it would be helpful for us to determine if we did get a town manager. What in this list of, um, current town programs and services? What would that individual be responsible for? And then I think that would help us determine a salary.
So I think that's a good comment. Um, it's helpful to think about it that way. So in your packet, there's a list of charter and code sections related to the current responsibilities of the mayor and the town administrator, if there is a town administrator who's appointed. And it talks about the mayor in the town charter. Access the cer, access the presiding officer of the town council and access the head of town government for both legal and ceremonial purposes. So we, you guys have seen all of that in action, right? Oversees the administrative functions of the town and makes recommendations to town council concerning personnel procedures and policy. To what extent can a town administrator under our current, um, governance structure take that piece?
Yeah. So I think really the way I would look at it is if you see that the citation is related to the charter, you likely can't change it without voter approval. If the citation is to the code, then you could, the mayor under the charter could delegate those responsibilities to a town administrator. So for instance, I'm just pulling from the scrap bag. One thing that you could do is have them approve job descriptions. You could have them submit and file RFPs for open positions. You could have them conduct interviews for those positions and bring forward a recommendation to council. I can go through other examples if you like, or.
Well, I, I.
I'm sorry. She's trying to say from this list, I kind of, I, I redirected a little bit because I think it's this list of programs and services that the town currently provides, there's an addressing policy. That's at the very beginning. That's already done, right? So a town administrator could likely be in charge of administering that, but a clerk could as well. So in fact, right now, the clerk is responsible for administering that policy. And so what, what's important about that is that it's, it was implemented in the last five to seven years and that it was something that we brought forward and you guys passed that, uh, I don't know, a town administrator could still say, we want to make improvements to this policy and could bring those forward and then the clerk would administer it.
Okay.
So under our current charter, the town administrator could make those recommendations.
Correct. Like they could rewrite that policy and bring it forward to council for approval rather than the mayor doing that. Um, okay. So.
What role would the mayor have in that in terms of the oversee the administrative functions of the town and make recommendations to town council concerning personnel procedures and policy in the charter? Like, how do those two things work?
Yeah, it's a good question. So again, when you think about this town administrator position rather than a town manager that used to be called the mayor's assistant, for good reason, that the mayor, when, um, she's able to per your code and charter can delegate a lot of the day to day administration responsibilities. But the mayor really can't delegate her supervision responsibilities over each department head. Um, so when it comes to those large policy considerations, say the chief says like, hey, uh, we've got a turnover problem. I think we need to talk about wages and salaries for our police department. She would be having that conversation and be the one saying, okay, we need to prioritize this right away. Or hey, sorry, this isn't a high priority. I'm going to bring it to council in a couple of months. Does that?
Yeah.
And then, so in that process, just to follow through with that example, she could say, hey, town administrator, could you please prefer, provide research on all of these issues? So council's informed about this, um, matter. I need all of these issues for the packet. So that's sort of how they would work in tandem.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Does that help answer?
It does. And also when we look at, uh, you know, like, uh, to prescribe additional duties for town clerk, right? I'm on page two of three on, um, sorry, I'm.
That's in the charter, prescribe additional duties to the town clerk who is appointed by and serves at the pleasure of the town council.
So, so when we go to establishing procedures for just, oh, these are all charters, right? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So it looks like the charters are all bolded.
Yeah.
And then the section, the code, uh, references are not. So that's kind of an easier way to demarcate the ones that are more easily.
Okay.
Delegable.
Okay.
Able to be delegated.
Okay, I think you're at home.
That is passive voice, though. It's just not my preferred.
Well, how about scrubbing the record?
Are we still using MyLars?
Yes.
Yeah, our planning department will process those still.
Okay.
Safe vote.
So should we go, continue to go through that list? Is that helpful for council or is there other, other? It's very time consuming, but I think the idea is that there are some things that can be changed in the code by council by two readings of an ordinance that would give the administrator some responsibilities. And that they would still derive their authority for acting on those responsibilities from their relationship to the mayor. Mayor Protem.
I'm just wondering, have you done any kind of consideration of where, how your time is split between these sort of two hats and two roles that you occupy as the strong mayor?
It's a good question. Yeah, yeah. It, it, it still felt like a full time job partly because, the because of the person in the position. But I think with the person in the position, if we found just exactly the right person and we had a strong clerk, I think that the supervision could go down to a part time job. Or we had a clerk office manager person, it like executive of. I really think the, the idea of the clerk fulfilling that role is the way that we should be going. And I think it would, it would depend on the competence of that person, whether or not the role was part time or, or full time. Councilmember Unger.
I don't know that this question could be answered. It's got too many sides to it. But I know whenever something doesn't work in my life, I try to look at it and say, why didn't this work? And I think, uh, I would like to have a little inkling, why didn't it work with John as administrator? Was it just? He wasn't competent. Of course, we don't know his side to it. So like I say, it can't be answered. Really, but I, I do think if there's any part of this that we can look at as a, a new administrator coming in, is there something that could be avoided, uh, for the last that we, lesson we learned from the last time?
We have learned lots of lessons and we want to, we want to sort of think very broadly about how do we move forward in that regard at that time, right? So the question now is really less about how to make that work if we were going to appoint a town administrator, because we know we've built into this ordinance, the possibility that we could appoint an administrator or manager. And so let's, let's think very close, very hard about how to craft that position when we are crafting that position.
May I ask?
Just let me make sure that we've got everybody at the table, having had a chance to speak before we have a second round. So it's really late and we need to make progress. I think we sort of know that we've got some people moving towards it increasing, making a motion to amend and increasing the salary, making, um, a amount to pay the incoming mayor with or without benefits and then lowering it if there is an administrator or a manager who is hired. So I think at this point in time, at 1018, we need to hear numbers that we're going to move this forward with, if we are going to move it forward, and that is entirely up to council. Councilmember Algean.
I, I really, I really struggle with coming up with a number, a salary for a town manager or a town administrator without.
You're not setting the administrator salary. You're setting the mayor salary.
We asked what your decrease would be, right? So it would be advantageous for us to have some sort of job description for that individual so that we can really be fair and calculate what the decrease would be. I don't want to say, you know, a number without having some data to help us determine what would be reasonable.
Do you have any suggestions there?
Not a legal question, but.
But you're so experienced with town, different town.
I mean, the way I see council's consideration for the decrease in salary is like, you've got a baseline right now you can work with. Other baseline is to say, to councilmember Bailey's question is like, if you're working half, maybe half of the salary is also appropriate when you step down. The salary, just two thoughts.
Thank you for that.
Can I ask for the record what the current, um, salary is set at?
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Thank you.
And no benefits. Councilmember Unger.
Just one thought, and boy, I play devil, devil's advocate with myself a lot in my head. I don't know how my husband lives with me. But, um, to decrease someone's salary, once you're used to a particular number of a salary, and then who's gonna make that judgment of saying, okay, we have an administrator, he's doing this, this and this, or she is. Isn't that a, wouldn't the person whose salary is being decreased feel like a slap in the face?
No.
Well, I know going into the position, right? And, and so it can only apply prospectively going forward. And so the folks who decide to run for mayor this term, if council approves this, will know that if a town administrator is hired, which is entirely a council decision, then they've got to live with the lower salary amount and they really don't have to say the matter.
But their time would be freed up and so they could go get a part-time job. At McDonald's. Councilmember Dennis, I think councilmember Debner has spoken already. Councilmember Dennis?
I was gonna say, um, you heard the numbers that I had. I think maybe going down from half, half of seventy when, or if a town administrator is hired. That's really where I'm standing. I just, I, I really want to try to move this forward. Are we going to do this? Let's, let's talk numbers.
So you would put seventy with benefits in the first blank and then thirty-five with benefits in the second blank?
With benefits.
Okay.
Why take that away?
Right.
So we've got sort of a, a broad thing on the table of seventy with benefits in the first blank and thirty-five with benefits in the second blank, plus the amendment of adding in the administrator or town manager.
Even say, or town manager in the case that the governance structure is changed.
Yes, or town manager in the case. So.
What are those numbers again, mayor?
The first, the salary of the mayor, just in this hypothetical situation, at, in the next term, would be seventy thousand with benefits that a full-time employee receives from the town. And if a town administrator or a town manager, in the case that the governance change, governance takes place, would be is, is employed by the town, it would be thirty-five K with benefits annually for the mayor. Can I just see a show of hands, a show of sort of thumbs up that you feel good about that from the table, or do we need to have more discussion?
Just a question, just a, a nuts and bolts question. So say, you know, so they, so this, this is passed with the decrease built in for either a governance structure or if the, if the council elects to hire an administrator. That, what's the turnover for that? Like, is that an immediate decrease? That's not like a four, that's not like four years out. That's like an immediate thing that happens right away and then.
So the way it's drafted is upon the start date of the town administrator.
Right.
And so it'd also be upon the termination date, would be the automatic turnover. We could change that to something else, but that seemed kind of clean as to administer.
Okay, are we doing, um, benefits just for the mayor, not their whole family? The benefits that the town employees receive include, so it would change depending upon what council approves in the employee handbook. When you guys approve those rate, those, those additions of to, or you, we, I, I suppose we could have a resolution where we change the benefits. But generally speaking, we approve the benefits when we approve the employee handbook at the same time. And those of benefits do currently apply to their families. Can we write it where it's just for the mayor? So it's, or not, so then it doesn't add more to it?
Sure, yeah, you can definitely put that in this resolution. Um, I would just note that the benefit thing you can change at any point because it's not restricted by the charter.
Okay. Oh, nice.
So it's, it's helpful to have it here.
Okay.
But, um, you can change that later if you want to.
Councilmember Algean.
Just a quick question about any part-time staff member currently? Are they receiving benefits?
No, just full-time employee.
Okay, so maybe we should look at that as well. I mean, I, I don't understand how, I, I, help me understand if we did seventy with benefits and then we decided to get a town administrator and cut to a part-time, right? Would that individual also need to have benefits if they're part-time? Because we're looking at half of the work.
That's just what's been proposed. So how does other council members feel?
I just want to raise a point. So if council is appointing the town admin.
They focused on the question that's on, that councilmember Algean just asked, so that we don't lose and disrespect her question. So do, do we understand her point? That if the, if the mayor goes from full-time to part-time and our employees as part-time employees do not receive benefits, she's asking, should the mayor still receive benefits? If she go, if he or she goes to part-time?
I mean, it would seem a little, I mean, I, I find it would be a little strange if like the one part-time employee, well, sort of, sort of employee, but quasi-employee because they're elected would get benefits. But then no council member would who are, are part-time and no staff member would get benefits. It just seems like it'd be a little, a little, a little strange in my mind.
I would agree with the, the part-time position with benefits would be, seems a little odd. Just, you know, understanding that if there's that administrative support um, for the town operations, that, you know, it really wouldn't make sense, you know, financially to also offer benefits.
I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb and offer the perspective of somebody who is having to imagine that, right? This is not about me. I'm trying very hard to re, like, help everybody remember that. But you have to put yourself in the shoes of the person who would be making the decision to run or not to run on the condition of how, like, how would things move forward in the future, right? So if you're in a part-time job and you're receiving benefits and then you would not receive benefits if, I mean, you're in a full-time job and you're receiving benefits and then you would not receive benefits if you went to part-time. You would have more of an incentive to resist going to part-time. And you want this person to go to part-time, it sounds like. It sounds like the council wants to move in the direction of hiring a professional, administrator or manager. The mayor works with that person and oversees that person and is responsible for helping council understand what could work. What, you know, making recommendations about job descriptions and hiring. So my recommendation would be that you keep the benefits for the mayor in the part-time role. That being said, I could certainly understand why you would do it the other way.
I, I think it's important to be consistent and it has to be fair uh, with all employees. And I think that there could be, could there be some sort of liability? If we have a part-time staff member who is not receiving benefits, but we're approving benefits for another part-time person?
Um, I, I think you said the key word, which would be consistency. So whatever policy you administered, if you're going to elevate one position, you couldn't flip-flop it with different people fulfilling that position. So I think you'd be okay if you extended benefits to just the mayor and not other part-time positions. But you.
Do we have any part-time positions? Our current clerk is.
I, I know, she's like interim, like is anyone?
We don't have any other part-time positions.
But I guess.
Only have in the past.
You wouldn't want to like flip-flop.
Okay.
Is our new public works, um, administrative assistant or?
Full-time. Councilmember Debner.
Um, one thought to consider is if, you know, the appointment of the town administrator is at the discretion of council and the mayor who, you know, would be forced to take a salary reduction. But if they're relying on that for a livable wage and they need that salary, that might affect their ability to, you know, essentially make it work. So that, I imagine they would probably have a second job if they go down to the part-time rate in, in many cases.
And most part-time jobs don't offer benefits. So you couldn't take a full-time job likely and still do the mayor's role.
Right, and then if you're, you're, you couldn't, if you couldn't really do the part-time, another part-time role and get benefits and you couldn't get benefits from being a part-time mayor, that.
That's what I'm saying. It puts that person in a bind.
It does.
They're gonna resist to endorsing hiring an administrator. It's human nature.
I believe that's universal, though, regardless of what position you're in. If you're working a part-time job, you don't get benefits and you have to work a second part-time job and you also don't get benefits.
It's really different. It's really different.
Okay.
So it is, and it is up to council's discretion, so. Okay, so we have, um, have, have we sort of zeroed in on, I think I only, I only saw three thumbs up for this, Debbie. Councilmember Lasher.
Would it make people feel better if we did like a higher um, salary and then no benefits? So then we wouldn't be having a benefit conversation or like, how does the council feel on that topic?
Yeah, that's thoughtful.
What, what salary increase are you proposing?
I mean, I'm not really proposing any. I just was thinking that maybe that would be helpful for, I, I, I just really like compromise and I really like everyone to be happy at the table, not just one side. So I'm just trying to spitfire ideas out that would, you know, be a compromise to make, you know, so everyone's giving and taking a little bit.
Yeah. Charity, it's about ten thousand for benefits.
Yeah.
Is it twenty or something?
Well, the benefits, the twenty K for the benefits also includes the retirement matching. Right, and so realistically, you can get a lot of privatized insurance premiums for a single person, anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred dollars a month. So if you raise the salary to forty K without benefits for a part-time person, that extra bump could cover the lack of benefits.
My only, um, yes, the only concern I would have is like, does that shut out other people who might want to run for mayor and hold that office if they're, they're, you know, if they're sensitive to like the benefits question? That, that would be my only other question.
I think so.
I'm sure you find compromise really. Oh, no, I, I appreciate it. I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm just trying to think like, okay.
Really simplifies it.
It does simplify it, but I just worry that like if, you know, maybe it's not, it isn't attractive of a, of uh, and of a position to, you know.
I think something to keep in mind is anyone who goes into a position where they're a public servant, whether they're elected or paid, we don't necessarily go into these positions because the glamour, they are very difficult, they're very contentious and you deal with a lot. So if someone is going into it with the mindset of the benefits or not, then maybe, you know, they need to consider why they're even running.
So let's, let's see, what if we said, you put seventy K in the first blank and thirty-five K in the second blank and there's no benefits for either one? Is that what we're, where we're at? Or we're going to, what, what's the number that you want to try?
Hmm, I suggested going up both those a little bit and no benefits, but.
So going eighty, let's try eighty. Eighty K with, with no benefits and forty if there's no benefits, but there's a town administrator or manager.
Um, may I ask, the town clerk, you said that if someone didn't have benefits, there's insurance where they could purchase that themselves and you mentioned it was two fifty to.
If it's for a single person, you can get premiums two fifty to five hundred a month. I think the nature of benefits now has kind of changed a lot because of the cost. Um, and so there's other options out there where someone could provide themselves benefits with the offset of the pay.
Okay, so if I said on the low end, two-hundred-and-fifty, right, and you times that by twelve, that like seventeen fifty? Am I doing the math right? So it would be less than ten thousand, right?
And these are just ballpark figures. I'm, I don't want to be tied to what each individual person's gonna cost because there's so many variables to it, especially if there's pre-existing conditions and all of those things that go into a benefits package. So I gave a rough estimate that would give cushion and cover. It, it's hard to pinpoint these exact things in a public forum.
So if we said seventy-eight K with no benefits and half of that with no benefits. And we made the motion to include the town manager in the case of a governance change. Do I have some show of thumbs up to support that? I was smart, yeah.
Could we vote on just adding one, like piecemeal it one at a time? So it's gotta be one motion.
Yeah, so, and I'm not seeing, I'm only seeing one person.
Who's using my calculator to add, so I didn't hear what you said. Sorry, what did you, not, not, it's what she said. I'm adding what the town administrator was. Okay, what? Sorry.
So it would be a, a motion to amend to fill in the first blank with seventy-eight thousand and no benefits. And the second blank with thirty-nine thousand and no benefits. And add to section one or town manager in the case that a governance change occurs. May I see a thumbs up? Or a so, so moved for that?
This is no benefits.
Correct.
So moved. But she is.
It's already moved. Do we have a second? Second. So we do have a motion on the floor and a second. And we are going to take this vote. It is gonna be by roll call vote. And what you're voting on is you are approving the salary for the mayor incoming compensation where section one is updated to have the compensation be set at seventy-eight thousand with no benefits. If there is not a town administrator position that is filled or a town manager and if there is a town manager in that, that case or an administrator, it would go down to thirty-nine thousand with no benefits. So we are going to ask the clerk to call the vo- roll call vote. Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Uh, yes.
Algean?
Yes.
Debner?
No.
Dennis?
Yes. Yes.
Lasher.
Sorry, Lasher.
Like, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. I know that was hard work. We are gonna go on to our next, um, question.
This is really simple. So this is.
Go ahead.
This is the purchasing policy. This is the second reading, what we'd be looking for. This is the purchasing policy. This is the second reading. What we'd be looking for um, is a motion to approve with an amendment that the effective date be the same day as the effective date for the resolution approving the purchase policy.
So moved.
Second.
May I please hear a roll call vote from the clerk?
Mayor Protem Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
Councilmember Algean.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Dennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Debbner.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We're going straight into general business, the town clerk recruitment options. I've included a memo in your packet there about what I sort of where, where we are in this process and, um, what I'm recommending is that because our new interim town clerk is incredibly competent and has jumped into the role headfirst and is also our treasurer, that we should give her the full-time position and allow her to fully occupy this position. In order to do that, I just basically need direction from staff for us to make that happen. And then we would like to have her, I mean, I'm sorry, for direction to staff, yeah, from council. Um, and, and what I'd like to recommend is that we continue this, holding her in that position through the election for consistency's sake, right? Through the election, it's just really nice to have consistency. She's already performed in that role really well. Um, as the designated elections official, and it's hard to make that change in the middle of an election. Council, uh, Mayor Potem.
Remind me where we are at in the process of the, the, um, full-time permanent clerk search.
Yeah, we've had quite a few applications and they come in occasionally still, so we could put that whole thing on pause until after the election and rest, restated up after that point. Um, I think that there are lots of options for how to, like, get it moving again. And some of those were, were in your packet. The idea of having a recruitment agency or having a council committee. But I think it'd be kind of wise to kick the can on that question and just make the determination that we know it's still an interim position. And, you know, we're not in a position to make a decision right now because we're in the middle of an election about the permanent position. But because she is really a good fit for us, that it would be nice to just give her the time to, the ability, cause to do the work and free the mayor up from doing council packets.
Yeah. Um, I'll just go ahead and state my kind of opinion and it might be shared with the, my fellow council members. Um, I think we should go to the full-time clerk with, um, our part-time clerk charity. And I really like the idea of like, we, of pausing the recruitment until after the election because I really, we don't know who is going to be mayor. And it doesn't seem very fair for a position that would be closely working with a mayor to presuppose that there's, we know the outcome and it would, and it's such a crucial, important position. And if there's, you know, if they, if the two don't get along, it's not gonna serve the town's interest. So I think it makes sense to push pause at that.
Absolutely agree.
So do I need more, like, do we need to bring that back to a special meeting or do, if I have sort of a general thumbs up from?
The only question is when we appointed charity, I think we did it as the interim. So for.
Should still be interim, but should we just go from part-time to full-time?
Then you're fine because we didn't include that with the resolution. So general direction is fine.
Councilmember Algean?
I, I just, uh, need clarification on this. If we have the interim full-time town clerk and she stays after the election but leaves, could there be a possibility of a gap where we don't have a town clerk? Or will that, will the interim town clerk remain in that position until we fulfill that full-time role?
Yeah, so she leaves. Which is not allowed to do.
Send it for life.
That, that's just my question. Would, is there a possibility that we would be in a predicament where we were, where we didn't have someone who was in that position?
I, I think that would be a conversation that would have to be had between myself and the mayor as to what that would look like if I do not choose the permanent role. Uh, and just out of professionalism, that would have to be something that would be planned.
Mm-hmm. Mayor Protem?
I feel like we also need to have that conversation about like what that role looks like too. And I feel like that also by pressing pause now, it doesn't make any sense to hire somebody in a full, as like a full-time interim clerk and we don't know what the position's gonna really even look like. Right.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So we're all okay with moving forward, pausing the, the, the permanent search and making the clerk full-time, the interim clerk full-time.
How have we handled the applications that we've received thus far? So I, it's a really tough market and I just want to be sensitive to people who have taken the time to apply, whether or not they were a good fit. I just.
I've talked with a few of them who have followed up with me and we, we, we could do a letter to everybody saying that we're pausing and we could make an announcement on the website as well.
I think we really should do that. It's just a really bad market and it's, it's stressful.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, other general business, the report on the residential questionnaire related to residential zoning. I just wanted to give an update on that because I know it's been pending. When our clerk resigned, really it just took all hands on deck. And we also had a sort of a slowdown on the other side as well, but it was kind of unfortunate. We lost some of the steam from both our side and the other side. But currently we do have a draft of those questions. Um, I have done an update to them and I've spoke with Todd from Fairfield and Woods about like what I, my suggestions. And then I've shared the draft with our mayor Protem, who has some professional expertise on this. And we're gonna, um, I'm gonna get her feedback. And then I think we should be able to move forward with that questionnaire fairly quickly and we'll be getting it out to residents, I, I would hope in the next two weeks.
Yeah, I'm, I, it's, it's on my very lengthy to-do list near the top, but um, it's been a very busy, I mean, three-hour meeting on Saturday, meeting tonight, and then I have Dr. Caga and, and the Demerite or Council of Governance meeting on Wednesday. So it's a busy week.
But I think that the questions are, were pretty close.
I'm sure, yeah.
Fairfield and Woods is, is open to all, you know, all suggestions and generally liked my feedback.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Um, staff reports, you know, I realized we went way over the three hours and I never heard a motion to continue.
Oh.
Didn't we? Oh, good.
Now if we go online.
Oh, no.
Keep going.
Can't afford that.
Does our new full-time clerk have any things that she'd like to report?
Um, I did make a administrative decision during this election. Uh, we have had two nomination petition packets come in. Town staff will not be notarizing any of them. I think it's cleaner that I'm not putting my notary stamp on any election packet. So I am recommending that anybody comes in with a packet that needs notarized to go to a bank and get it done. Um, we're also identifying a few internal financial controls that we're going to try to update to help Lorraine's team process things faster. Um, we are working with them, so hopefully we can get these financial reports two to three weeks after month end. Um, and I think the last thing.
The grant stuff?
Oh, I did reach out to our DOLA rep. I am working on getting a meeting set with that and I have found two different insurance brokers. Um, one of them actually specializes in public sector insurance programs. So I will be getting those meetings set. So when we bring the budget back, I'll have better numbers for the benefits piece.
Great job.
I got your email. I have not ignored you. I was responding to resident comments for much of the afternoon.
Chief? He woke up.
Todd, here. Mayor, first of all, uh, uh, with your permission, I know, uh, myself and Sergeant Berman had some information to, to give you guys about AVIS. Um, given the hour, um, I can either send that out to the council members or we can do it on the next council meeting.
Let's do it at the next council meeting. It's, it's critically important that we communicate that well and that they hear.
I think so too, yeah. Uh, so just real quick, uh, first of all, just want to thank everybody for all the, the cards and the gifts for, uh, uh, the, uh, Mount VPD, uh, MVPD Appreciation Month. It was great. Thank you all for everything. I, the, the outreach was amazing. We appreciate everything. Officer Sydney King has been promoted to the rank of corporal. She's a great fit for that position. She has respect of all the staff. Um, I think she's gonna do, she's gonna do great. We're excited to have her be a part of our team. Um, Sergeant Berman, which has been here since what time this morning? He got here at three AM this morning, so, yeah. Uh, he will be doing, he, he wanted to wait and see if we were gonna do the AVIS stuff, but I can't believe he's still here. Um, uh, he has his, uh, uh, office hours, uh, on September thirteenth. He'll be, we'll put that out on the, uh, on the Facebook page. Uh, he has a demonstration of the, uh, Exion four body cam. Uh, it's actually pretty impressive. I don't know if you guys have seen that. I tell you, go, go look it up before you get there. It's, uh, amongst a bunch of other features, it actually has its own built-in translator. So you hold a button down, this person speaks to you and it it translates for you. So it's actually pretty impressive.
Pete, what that's called, sorry?
It's called the Exion four body cam system.
Exion four?
Yep, uh, A-X-O-N. Um, that's what I said. Yeah, um, we are all really looking forward to the picnic, um, uh, coming up to one of our favorite events. Uh, I'll, I'll keep this short. If you might have any questions about the packet, please let me know. I know it's incredibly late. So, uh, we still have Dave listen to it.
Coordinator Nugent?
You've got my report in front of you. Um, I just wanted to highlight two or three things. Uh, first one is the pothole repairs that we've been waiting on will be being, will be being done on Wednesday. So you'll see them around town doing some of that. The other thing, just as a quick thing, is that we have gone ahead and hired a public works assistant. He should be starting next Monday and so hopefully that will help to get a little bit more code enforcement, you know, stuff done. Uh, other than that, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask. Otherwise.
Questions for Coordinator Nugent?
I just have one comment. Um, thank you again for that presentation. It was wonderful. And my second comment, sorry, I lied. I had two comments. Um, second, second comment is, um, I think your pothole repairs are far superior to that of Wheat Ridge because that pothole is again coming up. We all know which one I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you, Coordinator Nugent, for all of your hard work. Uh, I really appreciate the presentation that you did tonight. It's really good. Um,
I can add just one thing about that pothole.
Uh-huh.
So we don't, sometimes the night shift, day shift don't, they don't transfer information as well as they probably should, especially with smaller stuff like that. I bet you we've talked about that pothole at least fifteen times.
Wow.
Dispatch hate this potholes back again. So Wheat Ridge is aware of it.
Wow.
Response time, response time is a little slower than in Mountain View.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So being that it is ten fifty-two PM, um, I'm gonna just make a, uh, use my chair's discretion to continue the mayor council and committee reports to the next meeting. And, um,
For the town picnic.
So for the town picnic is still gonna happen.
Before the next meeting. Oh, just Saturday, five o'clock. Be there right at five o'clock because we have a really cool show right at five o'clock, so.
And wear your Hawaiian garb.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to adjourn? We adjourned at ten fifty-three PM. Thank you, everybody.